At 7:08. Madam Chairman, roll call, please.
I'd like to be Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maurice LaRosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner here, Charlie Masterverdi.
Here.
Andrew Banowitz.
Here.
Lynn Skoll.
Here.
James Brislin. And our newest and loveliest addition, Bob Gillespie.
Here.
For the audience, there's two means of egress in a case of a fire. First one is to your right. Out, take the first left down the stairs out into the parking lot. The second one is directly behind you to the rear of the council chambers. Go through the double doors, down the steps, and out onto the town green. Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the benefit of any new applicants we may have here tonight, just a quick summary of how we're going to be conducting business. The secretary will read your legal notice. The applicant will be asked to come forward, state his or her name and address for the record. The applicant will then present their application to the board. The board may or may not have any questions. The audience will then be given an opportunity to speak for or against your application. If the audience speaks, the applicant will be given opportunity for final comment. If there's any information that we may or may not have in our packets that the applicant would like us to have for consideration tonight, that must be presented while your public hearing is open. Once the public hearing is closed, we legally cannot accept any other information. For the record, a variance may be granted where such grant is not in effect. Let me start to that over again. For the record, a variance may be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, and where a strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A legal hardship exists when a zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land different from other properties, and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without a variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered a reason for granting a variance. Last month, month of January, we did not have a meeting. One of the applications that was scheduled to be heard in January has been postponed to tonight. So we will hear that one first, and then we'll move forward with any new business that was given to us for this evening. Madam Secretary, could you read the legal notice, please?
Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearings on Monday, February 23, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the town hall, first floor, 820 Enfield Street. Oh, I get it now, Jenny. Concerning the following. ZBA 2015-01-01, Michael Brooks from Astrom Solar Inc., applicant Michael M. Wink, owner, 39 Edgewood Drive, map 53, lot 546, R33 Zone, appeal of order or decision of zoning official of Article 9A and Article 9.10. Is that 9? Article 8A and Article 8.10 of the Enfield zoning regulations.
Unfortunately, we will not be able to open this public hearing for this application due to the fact that the applicant did not refute the decision of the ZEO in a timely manner. The State of Connecticut, in the state statute, gives 30 days. The hearing was not posted before then. It was several months later, and therefore, we legally cannot hear this one. Madam Secretary, will you read the second legal notice, please?
ZBA 2015-02-01, Michael Brooks from Astrom Solar Inc., applicant, appeal of order of This is of. Decision of zoning official of Article 8.80A, purpose, and 8.80.1 of the Enfield zoning ordinance pertaining to the building permit. Application for 11 Ryfield Drive rejected by ZEO as not being in zoning compliance.
Will the applicant come forward, please? Also, for the record, Chairman Peter Yarm is not present tonight. He has instructed me that Lynn Skoll will be sitting in his place.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Keone Maher. I'm here in place of Michael Brooks, who couldn't make it in tonight. He's traveling on business.
You need to sit, and sit till the microphone will pick you up.
Okay, thank you.
And Jenny, just for the record, we're still not on.
No, he came in, he couldn't get the TV to turn on. But we are on TV. Right.
Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Thank you for having me in tonight. My name is Keone Maher. I work with Astrom Solar in Connecticut. I'm here in place of Michael Brooks, the original applicant. Unfortunately, he was traveling on business, and due to the fact that this meeting was postponed or moved back a month, he couldn't make it here tonight, so I'm here instead.
Okay.
And I guess there's a little confusion on my part about why we are only hearing on two, or potentially one out of the three applicants that were failed, or...
We're hearing two of them.
Okay.
The reason for the third one not being heard was it was, the hearing came to us through a dispute from the ZEO. That dispute was several months before the application was filled out and turned in, and the state statute gives us 30 days, or gives you 30 days to refute any findings from the ZEO. So from the date that the ZEO told you that you were not in compliance, we would have to come forward for a variance, the clock starts, you have 30 days.
Okay.
It was actually several months. It was well past 90 days from that point to the application. So the State of Connecticut won't legally allow us to hear that.
That's understood. I mean, was that ever communicated to Michael Brooks?
The fact that he was, the ZEO's decision was communicated to him.
Correct.
I'm not sure how he, Jenny, are they made aware of the 30-day rule, or...
No. Normally, when a building permit is rejected by the ZEO, most people don't appeal the decision. It's not a, it's not a zoning violation as such. It is, they are appealing my decision, but not of a zoning violation. He did not ask me, and I did not say anything.
Okay. Okay. Well, that might be something for the board to consider in the future, because I wasn't aware of that. And I apologize for making...
We still can't legally hear it.
No, and I'm not, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
So maybe I'll state my purpose here. Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Well, thanks for your time tonight. I do appreciate it. I am here representing Astrom Solar and a couple of our potential clients. I'm not exactly sure what, what project that was rejected. I didn't actually hear the client's name.
Edgewood Drive.
Edgewood Drive.
Edgewood Drive is rejected. So that's the Wink residence? So I guess I'm here to discuss the Stidson residence and the Tyler residence. I'm not sure if you'd like to address these on separate...
I would, because they do have to be voted on separately.
Understood.
So we're going to take the Ryfield one first. That's the notice.
The Stidson residence.
Right. So we're going to do that one first, and then we'll do the other one after.
Okay. And I think Mr. Stidson is here tonight. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. I hope you'll excuse me. I am actually, like I said, sitting in for Michael, so I don't have all the details. I haven't really been involved heavily in this discussion until basically tonight. So if, if I'm ignorant in any way, you know, please let me know, and I'll try to make amends. So what I'm here to discuss, or to, you know, hopefully propose to the board, is that Mr. Stidson be granted a variance to our application to install solar panels on his roof in such a manner that allows him to basically produce the amount of electricity that he would like to produce in order to pay for his electric bill. And I think that's what I'm here to do. Evidently, the proposal was rejected because the, the shape of the solar array is not contiguous rectangle. It's missing one panel in the upper right corner. And due to shading from the chimney. So I, and if I'm correct, it was rejected for that reason. And it seems to me like it's an undue hardship on Mr. Stidson to have to redesign and not be allowed to put a solar array on his roof that provides him enough electricity for his current usage because of a, what appears to be some kind of aesthetic decision.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman? Just, just because you're new with...
Yeah, thank you.
They're appealing the decision. They're not asking for a variance.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, you've denied it, and they're appealing your decision. Correct. Okay.
Just so you understand, we can't give you a variance tonight, even if we wanted to, because that's not the reason you're in front of us. You're here to only ask us if we will uphold or not uphold her decision to tell you, him, that he can't have the configuration that you have.
Correct.
Okay.
In doing so, it would tell him whether, whether he needed a variance or not.
So that would be the next step? If, if and so, that would happen?
Correct.
Okay.
If we in fact uphold the ZEO's decision, you would have to file for a variance.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that to me.
If we, if we don't uphold the ZEO's findings, then you don't need the variance. You just move forward with your project.
Okay. And I'm assuming you all have a plan?
If we uphold the ZEO's decision, that means he, she is correct.
Right.
And that he would need a variance to move forward.
No, it's not allowed.
No.
And if you find that I did something incorrectly.
Then he...
Then they get a positive.
Correct. But I, we can't tell him, no, he can't seek a variance for that.
Correct. But you can't say to him, if you are...
Right. But what I'm saying...
We know what you're saying.
Is he would now have to seek a new application for variance.
Yeah.
Just making sure that you're on the same page.
Let's just stick to what we're here for.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I'm actually confused now.
Yeah.
Sorry. I apologize again, I really do.
There's a few things, if you wouldn't mind, there's a few things that the Zoning Board of Appeals looks at. One of them is a variance. If you have a corner lot and you're shy one foot for an addition.
Sure.
They'll look at, if there's any other way you can do it, and if not possibly, you could have a variance. If I do something incorrectly, the applicant can come before them and appeal what I've done.
Okay.
And that's what you're here for. Those are the two major things that the Zoning Board of Appeals hears.
Okay. So if indeed I walk away unsatisfied, am I, do I then have the opportunity to apply for a variance?
No. If you, if, if they uphold my decision, the next step would be to get a lawyer and go to court.
Okay.
Because you can't have a...
So did I miss out on an opportunity to apply for a variance in this case?
It's not a variance. I'm, I'm charged by the Planning and Zoning Commission with upholding the zoning regulations. And that's what I did. And Mr. Brooks felt that, that I was interpreting them incorrectly, and that's why you're here.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's the case, I thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that. So I guess I'm here to plead for the Stidson residence in a way to allow them to install the solar array as designed in order to provide enough electricity for their current electrical needs. And I am assuming that the zoning bylaws are, are an undue hardship on Mr. Stidson, and they need to, this needs to be addressed. There are several of these plans that I have in front of me, I guess we're going to address to tonight individually. I know we're talking about the Stidson residence now, but this isn't anything that's going to like stop happening. There's a lot of Enfield residents that are applying or looking at solar designs, and each house is unique and different. Each homeowner has different needs based on their, their own unique electrical usage. And so we're doing our best to provide a service to the citizens of Enfield, town of Enfield. In order to, to bring solar to Enfield that's affordable and practical and, you know, meets the needs of the people in the town. I would also say, maybe in closing, that we provide a valuable service. We create jobs locally for local people, and we help reduce fixed costs for a lot of the residents here, specifically more mature residents that can't afford increasing electrical costs.
Any questions?
Just in case you, do you have a copy of the zoning rules in front of you?
I do. Well, I have a, I have a section.
Do you understand the section? 8.80?
Well...
8.80?
No, I don't understand the section.
What it comes down to quickly is that the Planning and Zoning Commission developed its regulations with a clear understanding that the array must be in a rectangular format and contiguous. Okay? There cannot be any breaks. It must be completely, and that's where you're running into the jam with that one square missing.
Mm-hmm.
That is, that instantly makes it, it's something we can't, they could not, that's why she said no.
Oh, it makes sense to me.
So when you come in front of us, as the chairman previously mentioned, what is the property doing that's causing you this problem?
Well, the property is demanding an amount of electrical production that we can't meet.
You're right. I went down the wrong road.
Right.
Upholding just the ZEO's decision. The ZEO is telling you, per their regulation, 8.80.1.5, you're not contiguous.
I, I understand what you're saying to me, and I appreciate the clear description. I would also add that I think we, we tried to redesign this so that we had two contiguous rectangles on the same roof, and I believe that that was also rejected because it wasn't one contiguous rectangle.
Correct. You're only allowed to have one array.
One.
Well, an array can be multiple modules.
But our rules are clear that it's one.
Well, is there, I mean, I guess my next question would obviously be, are you, do you understand what you've done by putting, by making those rules? Because they're obviously causing hardship on the town.
Understand, this is a board that does not write the law. That's planning and zoning.
Okay.
All we do is we interpret and enforce the laws. So we didn't create the regulation. We're here to abide the regulation or give relief if relief is needed on a regulation. Okay? Now, I would, I would ask, I understand that the chimney adds some shading, but for sake of argument, couldn't you take out two panels or just add that third panel? Just for the sake of coming into regulation compliance?
Well, that would be up to Mr. Stidson, of course, if he would like us to do that. Of course, it's not going to meet his current electrical needs.
I mean, if you added that one other panel, you could walk out of here tonight and do your project.
Well, I think what happens, though, it's hard to see on this picture, but the upper row is in landscape orientation, and the lower two rows, rows are in portrait. And so when you, they don't line up perfectly. There's going to be a couple inches where the landscape orientation on the top row sticks past the bottom two rows. I mean, it's going to be a couple inches, but it isn't going to be contiguous, it's not going to be perfectly square. They just don't make solar panels that do that.
Okay. So yours, it's the, it's the top, it's the yellow.
Are we looking at the same?
Are we looking at this?
Yes, correct. So it, although it appears that they're going to like line up identically.
They don't.
It's, it's not quite perfect. It's very, it's very close.
Right. It lines up...
It's very close, but again, this is a, this isn't, you know, a construction drawing. It's going to be several inches off. So I think, I think Michael was under the impression that even if we did that, we could, you know, basically be in violation. And I think he was concerned that we, of course, don't want to do that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Ask counsel?
I look at those when I'm reviewing, wearing my ZEO hat for the building permits. And if they're the same-sized panels, and they're in rows, I don't understand how they could be off.
Well, I guess, just to be clear, I hope it's clear enough by the, the description that we have here, but if you look, the two bottom rows actually are vertical panels. They go straight up and down, and the top row is horizontally orientated. So they won't line up perfectly. They'll line up very closely, but if you'll, if you start on the left and go to the right, you'll see the first panel lands in the middle of the second panel, and then the second panel lands kind of on the fourth panel. So there's a chance it'll be very close, but it's, you know, it's, there's a chance that it will be a few inches off, too.
Why can't they make panels to just, to be made for the particular house you're putting them on?
Well, I mean, I wish that they could do that. Unfortunately, most of these panel manufacturers are...
They make what they make. They don't make to spec.
No, they're not, it's not a custom panel, no. Unfortunately, you can't order them to size. They come in three sizes, 60-cell, 72-cell, and 96-cell. And the 60-cell is 41 and a half inches by 65 and 3/8 of an inch, and that's just the way it is. You know, I wish they did, too. And I'm sorry to, you know...
So Jenny, does it have to be perfectly square? Can it be off by an inch or two?
Can I just go over and ask a question?
Yep.
Are we looking at the same one?
This is the house.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If you took these off, it would be all together, correct?
It would be very close.
Well, nobody is, what you show is what I approve. This was not approved. If you took this off, then you would be all together, because they're all the same size, correct?
Actually, it might be helpful for you if you look at this color-coded picture, because this one is just, it's hard to read, and I apologize. We should have given you 11 by 17 prints.
I never get those.
Oh, well, that's, we'll work on it. So if you'll notice, these two lower courses or rows of solar panels, can I use your pen just to illustrate a point? The long dimension is, is right from here to here. Does that make sense?
But if you took those two off, it'd still be...
It's very close. I agree. But what I, I guess what I'm trying to illustrate, my point is, these panels, basically, is this panel flipped on its edge. So it's going this way. It's not going, otherwise it would go like that.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We don't care what the panels look like, as long as they're all together, correct? That's my interpretation, as a...
Correct.
And that's what I explained to Mr. Brooks.
And if you're looking at, you know, it didn't line up by half an inch when you finished it, I'm not going up there with a measure.
Well, I know, and I, I don't probably think we'd even be here...
I mean, I don't want to see a foot out.
Right. So I guess my question is, what, what is the dimension that's acceptable?
I really think if you took the bottom two off, you, two panels off, you'd be fine.
Yeah. And that's what I proposed to Mr. Brooks.
Okay.
I mean, I have to look at what you gave us for a drawing, and it looks pretty close to lined up to me.
Yeah, and I appreciate your effort and your conclusion. I'm in no way here to like...
You know, I understand now why you couldn't add that, that little corner piece, because now you're adding a panel that's a panel and a half.
Correct.
So I understand that. Do they make a little square panel?
They do not.
No.
They actually don't. Unfortunately, they don't make, they make three panel sizes, and these are the smallest ones and the only ones that basically would, would fit on this roof.
Don't they make different strengths of panels, though? Like light bulbs?
They make different wattage panels.
In a series, yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
But the wattage is determined basically by the size.
Okay. But you put shims indoors, okay? Nobody said it actually had to be a real panel. They just said it had to be rectangular. Why don't you just put a filler in?
Well, I'm here to listen to you. I'm not here to like, you know, be competitive in any way.
Oh, no. But it's, we're going to hear these over and over again, and...
You are going...
Please understand, we do not make 8.80.1. anything.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I don't want to belabor a point here. You know, you guys are doing your job. Virginia's doing her job. I'm doing my job, and that's completely understandable and respectable. I think what I, and maybe we should just address, you know, come to a conclusion on these two projects. However, going forward, it's not, honestly, this is a fairly easy one to fix. I think maybe if we discuss the next project, it might not be so straightforward. And how, as a, you know, as a, somebody who works in the solar industry, and somebody who works for, you know, town government, and how do we kind of work together to make, you know, to bring solar to the houses in Enfield where, you know, people in Enfield want it?
I think Mary Ann just gave you a...
But that's...
A great way of fixing it. If you, if your company designs filler pieces that look exactly like solar panels, but they don't produce the energy...
Well, no company designs filler pieces that looks exactly like solar panels.
But it's possible to solve a whole bunch of problems.
Well, I, I agree that anything is possible.
It could be plywood painted black.
Well...
Really?
Well, think about it.
I'd make sure I'd get that to the planning office first.
But I mean, think about it. A filler, a filler. Nobody says it, nope, they didn't say it had to work. They just said it had to be rectangular.
Right. Okay.
You go to a glass company and say, hey, give me some panel of smoked glass.
As long as it's comparable to what's there.
Right.
In other words, you couldn't have a pink and have all the rest be black.
But we're already saying that.
Okay.
So it's got to look the same. It's got to look decent, and it's got to be contiguous.
That's understood, and I think it's fairly clear in the, the articles that here that that you have. I think it also says in here, "The regulations are adopted for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and morals and general welfare of the community," which I don't think, you know, this is representation of personally and professionally. In addition, I guess, I think that this is, your solution is, is totally reasonable and acceptable to probably everyone, probably including Mr. Stidson, although I should let him speak for himself. However, I think that the, the project that we're specifically talking about right now is an easy one to overcome. I think this is just not a very good example, and maybe as we move on to this, or the one that was rejected, I guess earlier, because we missed some deadline that we weren't aware of, is, you know, this. And there's going to be, there are going to be additional, you know, issues that we continuously encounter in Enfield, and I just hope we can figure out a solution that's, you know, painted black plywood, maybe that is a solution that the town is acceptable.
I don't know. But I'm just, you know what? Let's, let's noodle a little.
We, we need to take each one on a individual basis.
We have to vote.
Right.
Yes. Are there any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this project? If you'd like to speak, come forward.
Should I leave now?
What was that? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
I'm Dana, Dana Stidson, and I live at 11 Ryfield Drive, Hallmark, which has some solar designers for me. And I wanted to just say a couple things. What is, I liked the design, and I, I was quite specific when I was working with Mike Brooks on it. Brooks on it. And, you know, the idea was to get maximum electricity production off the roof, you know, so, you know, I mean, that was, that was just my goal, to get that, you know, as possible now. He started talking to me and he keeps, he kept me in a loop through all the communications with, with Virginia and, and the Connecticut Light and Power Company and, you know, they gave their stamp of approval to it, they're called Eversource now. Anyway, they, they kept me in a loop of all this and I was, I was kind of dismayed that it, that we had to come to the zoning board of appeals and it was denied, the zoning. And I guess my, my biggest issue with that is, is the whole rectangle thing and I, I just don't understand why, what, what the point of the rectangle stipulation is, you know? I guess that's my biggest concern, you know? I mean, I, the, the proposal, the, the regulation talks about being, protecting, you know, the public health, safety, and welfare and environment. And I just don't see how a rectangle stipulation accomplishes anything in that regard. What, what does that do?
Any question on why the regulation is written the way it is would have to be brought up to the appropriate board, which is zoning board.
Okay, no, I understand, I understand, I'm just, I'm just talking, I'm just, you know, just kind of, to honor my two cents, I guess, if I will. Now, the whole idea about maybe putting a piece in that corner, I mean, I, I would be fine with that if they can put something together. I mean, that's, you know, that's not a, not undue hardship to me. I don't want to reduce the size of the array if we can because I, like I said, I want to get maximum, maximum production out of it. Now, the other part that I had discovered along the way, which I wanted to mention and I, and I, this might not be the appropriate time to say something like this, but there are a whole bunch of arrays in Enfield that were approved and installed over the last year that were not rectangular. Lots of them, I mean, it's, it's...
I believe there's 20.
So it's like, and I, I guess, from that standpoint, that just, you know, it's telling me, well, gee, maybe the rectangle's being ignored or wasn't previously, and now I feel like I'm getting picked on, you know? It's pick on Dana Stetson month, you know what I mean? It's like...
I do understand that, I can address that quickly for you. We had a different zoning enforcement officer at the time and things were going through that shouldn't have gone through. You know, the zoning enforcement officer right now is upholding what the zoning rules are. For whatever reason, the, the old CEO didn't do that, I can't speak for why she didn't do that. But once it's signed off on whether it's appropriate or not, we're stuck with it. Certainly doesn't mean that we want the new zoning enforcement officer to turn a blind eye either, so...
Well, no, I understand. I mean, the, but I'm still left with this whole rectangle thing and I just, I, how, how would someone, maybe you can't tell me, but how would someone go about changing that?
You need to take that up with the Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning?
Commission, they meet on the...
Another, you know what I'm saying, in other words?
Yes.
Get rid of the rectangle stipulation.
They're the commission that...
I think that's going to be a huge hardship.
Planning and Zoning is the commission that writes the rules and regulations that the town follows. So anybody that disagrees with something that's in the zoning regulations, you can always go in front of Planning and Zoning and voice your opinion and see if you can get them to change it. That would be the appropriate board.
Okay. So, um, okay, I guess that's...
I, I do know that they just had a meeting a couple weeks ago on the same thing, a bunch of people brought it in front of them, and they still made it very clear of what they were looking for. I didn't sit in the meeting, so I'm not sure of what the reasoning was, but you could certainly go on YouTube and pull up the meeting.
About solar panels?
Yes.
All right. I mean, I, I, I just think it would be a major hardship in a, in a lot of situations. It's almost eliminate a lot of the, the solar panels that would be installed. I, I, I just got to believe that will happen because you have to install a certain amount to make it worthwhile. The, the comment that you asked about how, how come they don't make custom sizes? Well, custom sizes would raise the price, which starts to put the whole situation out of reach. That's why, that's why that's kind of, you know, it's like mass production type economics, keep things cheaper. But anyway, I guess that's, in regards to like a filler on a, on a, the missing corner, is that an acceptable thing to do something like that?
Sir, we're only here tonight because Mr. Brooks felt I misinterpreted the regulations.
Right.
You have very good questions, but it's not for this board. Mr., this gentleman or Mr. Brooks should come back with what they want to do, and if it's what we just discussed, it's probably likely that it will be approved. But tonight is not the night and this isn't the board that can help you.
Okay.
When's Planning and Zoning meet again?
Um, March 5th. I don't think they have another one.
So they have a public participation portion of their meeting on the first Thursday of every month and you might want to make that something to do later.
Do you have to get it on an agenda ahead of time?
Nope, being just come, and when they ask for public participation, as long as there's nothing on the agenda related to you, what you want to talk about, the chairman will allow you to come up and speak. So that's March 5th, and it usually starts, it starts at 7:00 and that public part is usually quite early in the agenda, 15, 20 minutes in.
Just so you'll know, there were people and there were solar companies that came and spoke several times.
Well, maybe you have a new idea to bring to them.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience wishes to speak for or against this application? Sir, would you like a few minutes for final comment?
Yes, please.
Again, state your name and address, please.
My name is Keone Maher, I live at 116 Route 148, Killingworth, Connecticut. First of all, again, thank you for having us here tonight, I appreciate the process. I might be a little discouraged by the results, but I do understand and appreciate the process. I guess, going forward, and again, maybe I'm speaking a little bit with a naive tongue because I was not involved in the conversation between Virginia and Michael Brooks, but there may be some confusion on our part about what we were here tonight to do. And it's unfortunate that that's the case. I think if Michael Brooks had been aware that this was not a appeal to the zoning board, we may have come, or I might be, might, might not be here, or I might have come prepared to speak about something else.
He was aware. We discussed it and he was very eager.
So he said he didn't want to appeal the decision?
That's what he came for.
He is appealing the decision.
But he's not applying for an variance. He's not trying to get an variance for this.
Correct.
Right.
He's just trying to appeal the decision and he turned down the opportunity to ask for a variance.
No.
He can still ask for a variance.
It would be what's your hardship? The hardship is the land, not the house. It's, you have a slope, you have easements, you have a septic system, but it wouldn't apply to the roof of your house, I don't think.
No.
Okay.
And it can't be financial.
Correct.
Well, I, I feel like the, the zoning statutes that are, have been adopted and accepted in Enfield are having a tough time dealing with a new industry. And I think that in order for Enfield to properly accommodate a growing industry that's bringing jobs and financial stability to citizens in Enfield and Connecticut and the United States, the Enfield zoning board, and not you, of course, should really consider some other options for the citizens of the town or city of Enfield, including some that don't, basically burden with undue hardship its own citizens who are just trying to pay their electric bill. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
None, not for me.
Okay, well, I'll throw two cents in. Yeah, I think we've given some options for them to think about. You know, we're not here to change the regulation and I feel that the zoning enforcement officer has certainly done her job with interpreting, interpreting the regulation as it sits in front of us. So, with that said, the, let's, let's make this perfectly clear.
Right.
An approval is saying we do not agree with the zoning enforcement officer, correct? It's backwards because it's an appeal to the decision.
Appeal an order or decision?
If you vote positively, it says he's, they're here to appeal the order of decision.
Correct. So if we say, if we vote for the decision to be reversed, that's a positive. That's for them. A negative is for the zoning enforcement officer.
Yes.
Okay, so in favor is for the applicant, opposed is zoning enforcement officer. It's reversed because it's not a variance. So all in favor, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed? It is, it is, yes, it's denied unanimously. Do I have to do this now or can I do this after?
Do it now.
The chair usually does it.
Make the other motions, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Seconded by?
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew. You're going to have to spell that. Thank you.
He doesn't know.
No. Reason for denying?
We're upholding the CEO's decision.
Can I borrow your pen for a second?
Sure.
I'm most positive. We're either for the applicant or against the applicant. All right, Madam Chair, Secretary, take a couple hats off, would you? Could you read the legal notice for the next application, please?
2015-02-02, Michael Brooks from Ostrom Solar Inc., applicant, appeal of order of decision of zoning official of section 8.890A, purpose and 8.80.1. I have to look that up. Of the Enfield zoning ordinance, CEO rejected building permit application for 33 Sandpiper as not being in zoning compliance. Dated this 11th day of February 2015, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal and Inquirer, February 11th, February 17, 2017. Do I need to start over?
Yes, please.
ZUBA 2015-01, 02-01, 02, I mean. Michael Brooks from Ostrom Solar Inc., applicant, appeal of order of decision of zoning official of section 8.890A, purpose and 8.80.1 of the Enfield zoning ordinance, CEO rejected building permit application for 33 Sandpiper as not being in zoning compliance, dated this 11th day of February 2015, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal and Inquirer, February 11th, February 17, 2015.
Would the applicant come forward, please?
I think there's an error, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Great.
Give us just a moment, gentlemen?
I believe there's a typo in the legal notice.
Did you check what they put on their application? I legal notice what's on the application.
Just give me a moment. Has anybody got a copy of this application? Because the application...
Did you get it?
Is it exhibit three?
Yeah.
Ginny, I don't, it's, I don't believe it's correct. Right. And it's not on the application. No, it's 8.890A. There is no 89, 890, there's not an 890.
Okay, so we're going to make that correction? Name and address for the record, please.
My name and address is, my name is Keone Maher, I live in Killingworth, Connecticut, 116 Route 148.
And I'm Charles Tyler, I'm the owner of 33 Sandpiper Road.
Okay. So cheers, gentlemen.
So like, maybe I'll start and rather than beat my head against the wall, I think maybe I'll take a different angle. I'm not sure how successful I'll be, but probably won't hurt to try. It seems to me like we're arguing about the interpretation of the zoning bylaws because obviously, we're not going to, we're not here to discuss changing the zoning bylaws or applying for a variance, we're here to discuss whether the zoning bylaws were interpreted correctly or not.
Correct.
And it, looking over Article 1, the introduction of the zoning bylaws in Enfield, there's section 1.10 and section 1.20 and section 2. The purpose and authority, the interpretation, and again, the interpretation again. And, you know, what I have highlighted here is that the purpose and authority of the zoning bylaws are regulations adopted for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and morals and general welfare of the community. And again, it says, "When interpreting and implying the provisions of these regulations, they shall be held to the minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare." And then in section 2, it goes on to say, "When not inconsistent with the context, words used in the present tense shall include the future tense, words used in the plural number shall include the singular number, and words used in the singular number shall include the plural number." So section 2.0, the interpretation, is very confusing to me. So I am moving back to section 1.20, which is the interpretation, which specifically says that the requirements are adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. And I'm curious how the board, what the board's idea is specifically regarding the Tyler residence and the, the irregular shaped rectangle accounting for a, a vent stack in the roof and how that has, how you can interpret that to be the promotion of the health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the town of Enfield.
We're here tonight because somebody gave us an application that refuted a specific zoning regulation that had to do with solar panels. Okay? So we're not gonna open up the book and say, okay, how does this one pertain to the health and well-being, and how does this one? We're, we're not gonna sit here tonight and dispute every zoning regulation in the books.
Well, it sounds like it's an interpretive decision to me, because there's 20 other solar roofs that have, there's 20 other roofs with solar panels on them.
I, I admire you guys coming out here on a Monday evening. I mean, I could think of many other things that we'd all rather be doing, and I really appreciate your dedication for your jobs. And I also feel your frustration with the proceedings and what this actually is supposed to be. Forgive me. So initially, the design of the roof was missing the panel, obviously, because it's a sewer riser pipe, I can't just relocate it. It would probably conflict with a number of other building codes and cause an undue normal hardship of finances and other problems, and stuff like that. So because of the mere fact that there are other incontiguous designs that were approved, by what you had said earlier of the person that was approving these is no longer the one that's actually approving these, and now she has taken their place, then, like you had said, we're stuck with it. So then everybody's gotta come that's denied and beat this into you. It's like, it's not right. It wasn't interpreted right. We got rid of them. Every job, you know, company, whatever, has those people that eventually get weeded out, kind of thing. The nature of the approval or disapproval is supposed to be taken up with the Board of Zoning, period. So the, you said first Thursday of every month?
First and third Thursdays.
First and third Thursday.
So you can go to eat both?
Okay. And that is the way that we actually change, how should we say, the bylaws or?
The regulations.
Regulations and stuff like that. I mean, my, I won't lie to you, my initial reaction to being denied is, you know, it's for aesthetic reasons, these contiguous panels, you know, it has to be symmetrical, it can't diminish the value of the house. I mean, it's, it's not like I'm gonna build a massive solar array in my front yard.
But you can.
But you've not been, you've not been denied yet.
Well...
Okay, this is where, we just started your public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and, and, and it was, so if it was the regulations strictly for aesthetics, am I appealing to the deer and the raccoons in my backyard? Because my backyard is literally a forest. But as far as that missing panel, if that is the singular criteria for my denial, then it would either take, I guess, I don't know if a variance would actually apply, or a full redesign of the actual panel system itself.
Well, you have two different things going on here. You have the missing panel.
Yes.
And you also have multiple arrays on, you have an array on multiple roofs.
So it's not just the missing panel?
Correct.
Okay.
The zoning regulation also states that you can have a single array on a roof. So they don't care how many panels you have, as long as it's a continuous contiguous array of a square or a rectangle, but it can only be on one roof.
Okay, so I'm, let me clarify. Having the dual array on the garage as well as the house, that's the violation?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the violation is both the double roof?
Yes.
And the missing panel.
Okay, so I have to have the array either on one roof without the missing panel?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any questions of the board?
No.
So in order to get approved, I would have to redesign a recent act?
Correct.
Okay.
At this point, until we vote, I don't know how the vote goes.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna speak for other commissioners.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I, I'm going to need to speak to Mr. Brooks, the person who he's sitting in for, about how we're going to go forward with solar panels. And if there is a way that we can possibly affect the laws that we are appealing right now, then that might be a possible strategy to go forward. Because this, for me, for my house and my energy use, would, is a significant amount of energy usage of my house. And I really want this. Five, $600, $700 electricity bills is really killing me. It really is.
Well, again, I think you need to take the idea of the filler piece back as a poss-
Yeah.
-thing to think about.
Although in this case, it still wouldn't really, it wouldn't solve the problem because we have multiple roofs.
Right. You have two, you have two things, but that still may be...
And to also echo what the other applicant had said, in order to have custom-designed solar panels, it would double, even sometimes triple, the amount of cost, because the factories that actually make the solar panels are mills. They have one set of dies, you know, they mass produce them, so that, that's why it's $25,000 to $30,000. I mean, that array right there, if it was custom, would probably break $100,000. You know, a majority of that, 70, 80%, would be the actual custom panels. But, you know, in order to keep costs low, they do it like that, then have companies like Astrom Solar, you know, engineers and design systems, and then, you know, we run into this.
Yeah, well...
So what is the purpose of this bylaw?
The purpose of the bylaw is to set a regulation for solar panels. Before that regulation went into the books, we had no regulation on by, on solar panels, which meant you couldn't put a solar panel on your house. Okay? So they had to write...
How is this promoting the public welfare, is my question? What, what is the, the actual purpose of the rectangular bylaw?
Again, I think that you're asking the wrong board.
The wrong board.
You guys don't know?
I don't sit on that board.
They only uphold what's in the regulations. You refer to them as the bylaws.
I'm curious if there's anyone in this room that knows the reason.
I do not know the reason.
So there's not a single person in this room that knows the reason that we can't?
And I wouldn't like anybody to, well, I wouldn't want anybody to speculate. We don't sit on the board. We weren't part of the meeting when they came up with the regulation for it. It's actually against the law to sit on both boards. So we're not privy to that information.
I'm just curious why there's nobody in this room that actually knows.
Let's put it this way, I do know, but I don't sit on that board.
Well, then you can, you can't say. And why not?
Because they wrote the regulations, and they did a lot of homework, and this is the configuration of those, that section 8.80, that they believed was appropriate.
And her job is to follow that regulation.
I'm not asking her what her job is, I'm asking her what the, why the regulation was created. But you do know, you just don't wanna tell me.
Mr. Chairman, he can take that up with the board, though.
He can. He can, you can certainly go to planning and zoning. You can come right out and ask them what, what their reasoning was for writing that regulation. I can't tell you.
Virginia, you would probably know, being on the town, in the town, on the town plan, or involved in the town plan, or being the assistant town planner, you would probably know the answer to this question.
As Mary Ann say, said, we all have very good ideas of what was intended. The Planning and Zoning Commission took two years, and they had multiple open houses, and some solar companies came, citizens came, and they took, and they went on field trips, and they looked at the different types of solar arrays, and then they came up with what they have currently. And our job, even though we all might have...
Opinions.
Opinions, is merely to, to stand behind and enforce zoning regulations. It's like, you know, just think of it as the law. Maybe a policeman might think something is not quite, you know, but he has to enforce it.
Well, you're interpreting the law, is what you're doing. And in the law, it specifically states that the requirements adopted for the promotion of the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. I'm wondering which one of those this bylaw is attempting to uphold.
You're referring to the Zoning Enabling Act, and that's a very large net, and I suggest you do more research on that, but that's all I can really say.
It's unfortunate that we can't get more satisfaction. I understand that your hands are tied here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak for or against this application? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
That closed the public hearing.
You did?
Yes. Once we make a motion and second to approve, the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Sorry, I probably should announce it, but, all right. Any discussion? Sentencing, none. Remember again, in favors for the applicant, and against is for the zoning enforcement decision. All in favor of this application, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed? Motion is denied. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Stay warm.
Sure. Make sure we get the spelling right here.
And Ginny, I messed you up earlier. I'm gonna need a... No, we can actually just take this out and put it in here, right? I used the wrong one for...
Just cross out the number and put it in.
All right, moving forward. All right, now I lost it. That's what I'm looking for, is my agenda. I lost my agenda. All right, now we have only one month of minutes, right? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from December? Second?
Second.
Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Charlie, Master Birdie. All those in favor, or any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Now we have correspondence, staff correspondence.
Okay. Um, because we had two packets together, I don't think that we were any new correspondence in this bunch. If there is, I apologize, because I don't remember seeing it. The only other two things were, oh, um, you all got the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies in your packet. That's, that's a good one to go to. And I'm going to need a head count. I already know Lynn can't make it, she has a prior engagement. Has anyone?
I'm in.
I'll go.
One, two, three. Mary Ann, Mo, Andrew.
That's Thursday evening.
They have a meal, and then they have speakers. It's usually quite informative.
I think I've gone to several of them.
Mm-hmm. I plan on going.
Get back here before you have a week.
Okay, um, make it, yeah, make it as quickly as possible, because there's a...
Do you feel like you'll bring with a license?
Yeah, call me tomorrow, or email me. Okay. And there was a, there was another one that's down in Middletown. It happens every two years. I apologize, I thought I brought it down with me, and I didn't. So I will email you all a copy of it. If you're interested, just let me know, and I'll sign you up for it.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you remember the date on it?
It's a Saturday. I wanna say in March or April.
Okay, I'll have to look for the email, then.
Yes, I apologize. Or if you wanna wait and come back up, I, I thought I stuck it in here, but apparently I didn't. And also, the ever-evolving liquor store.
Oh.
Um, I thought, last meeting, I, I had mentioned that we were making progress. The original architect is back on the scene, Mr. Name, well, we won't refer to names. Um, and there's been some discussion, so I'm, you're probably gonna see a cease and desist soon from me. Um, and then, then the last thing I had was...
Uh, back on that one, just for a moment.
Sure.
Isn't there already an existing cease and desist?
I thought there was, but I didn't send it, so I wasn't sure how valid it was. I sent them a letter, and they came back to the acting plan, the interim planner, with a list of how they would fix it, and asking for a timeframe. You know, that's not something you can correct overnight. And I've worked with people in the past as the zoning enforcement officer, and when they've made an attempt to comply, I usually work with them. However, it seems to be rescinded.
This is, this, June 30th is when we asked you?
Yes.
To put them in cease and desist.
Okay, let me look. I, I'm sending out so many things now.
Was that asked of her, or Lynn?
No, no, it wasn't asked of her.
Send Ginny an email, crappy Courtney.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um...
Because there's, there's several things out there that need to be corrected relatively quick.
I know, I know.
You know?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll have an update for you via email very soon.
Right, and if you haven't, do it.
Yes, and, um, one other thing. Oh, the actual log that I used to keep for you on how the...
That was what I was getting to.
Yep. How, after your decision, what transpired or didn't transpire or took place. And it took me a while to find it. I found it, and I will have it in your next packet.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And if we don't have a meeting, I will email it to you.
Well, there's no more snow coming, so...
No, no.
I hope, till Saturday.
But you will continue to get solar.
Any other business?
Do we have an update on the environmental station? We were just looking for, I think we finished that, that they are not coming in to see us, and it's gonna be there for a longer time to come.
Correct, correct, nothing new. Um, the other one I wanted to bring to your attention, and thank you for, for that reference, is you talked to them at 100 Elm Street. They ultimately went to Planning and Zoning and got a special permit for that box.
Okay, good.
Uh, however, they now are coming back to Planning and Zoning, and they wanna tear down the whole building, and they had put in, um, they're gonna have to revise it, because they had a drive-through window for, like a Dunkin' Donuts, and I saw that... because they had a drive-through window for, like a Dunkin' Donuts, and I saw that and I went, hmm. Um, it's, it's in the discussion stage, but I did want you to be aware of it before you either heard it from someone else, or you read it in the paper, or you saw it. They're, um, anxious to tear it down and rebuild it. And they have to do it, and I, no, I'm just saying that that's a, quite a large use for a small parcel, and they have to adhere to current zoning regulations if they...
Can't, but there's area, no, there's a, there's a driveway to one side of them.
Yes.
Is there any lawn left, or is that Figaro's?
Um, there is some lawn, um, that, but that's the square, and there was some discussion in the meeting I was in about possibly closing up one of those. Make it less confusing, you know, close up one of the entrances or exits. There's one, one or two behind where Target is, and then there's one that you can only go one way towards the square, and then there's one on Elm Street.
Right, there's three entrances, one exit.
Correct.
Well, just remember that they probably have an environmental problem over there, and that has to be incorporated, and whatever they decide to do, tear it down or not, okay?
Correct, and I've been...
Please just don't forget.
I've been watching it, um, but I did fail to tell you about it at the last meeting because it was very preliminary and I hadn't seen anything. When I saw the plan, that's when I thought, hmm, you know, you're right. If they're gonna have that box...
It's gotta be disclosed.
Then that's an issue.
Well...
Okay, so just, just know that it's coming, and I will...
That's what you gotta do.
...update you when I get anything.
Anything else? Welcome, Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Or adjourned at?
Second.
8:17. Don't need a second on the adjournment.
Okay. Ginny, would you make sure that Bob gets a zoning book?
What, somebody gonna tell me no?
Absolutely not. But, I mean, really, do we wanna go out there?